I call this meeting of the Carson City School Board to order. First item on the agenda is the adoption of the agenda. This is for possible action. So we have a motion by Joe, second by Laurel. Any discussion from the board? Any public comment about the agenda?
Seen no public comment.
I'll call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Next item on the agenda, trustee Varner, would you please lead us in the flag salute?
Let's lead this to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item number three, superintendent's report. This is for information only. Mr. Stokes.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Good evening. I just have one item for your information. Tonight's meeting is being supported by Letitia Servin, who will be translating for us especially on items number eight and nine. And for those who might be watching the meeting tonight via their computer, if you go to the bottom of your screen and just slightly to the right of center, there's a little round icon that looks like a globe. If you click on that, you're then given the opportunity to select Spanish as your language. So I just wanted to make sure that any of our friends or families who might be watching tonight and need translation into Spanish, they can have that accessibility. And so, thank you, Mr. President. That's my report.
And I'd just like to thank trustee Ramirez and Letitia Servin and Mr. Stokes for setting that up so everybody could access the meeting. Item number four, board reports. And we'll start with trustee Karini.
Nothing tonight.
Okay. Trustee Welke. Trustee Varner?
No report.
Trustee Casiopo?
No report tonight.
Uh, trustee Ramirez? And trustee Crossman?
Uh, just from NASB, which you all are aware of, but in case anyone is wondering, the nominations for NASB awards deadline was pushed back, given all of the work that boards are putting in now. So that's why we're not doing it on the agenda this time.
Thank you, and I have no report. Next item on the agenda is association reports. Looks like we have Mr. Wallace.
Good evening, Mr. President, Mr. Stokes, members of the board and the public. My name is Brian Wallace. I'm the president of the Orange County Education Association, which is our teachers' union here in Carson City. Um, I know you have been flooded with emails from a variety of teachers, educational support professionals, and et cetera, and hopefully the public and parents, too. So I have nothing to really add beyond that, except one word: confidence. Um, as we move forward this evening with the choices, uh, the seven you decide to make and forward on to NDE, that's where we need to really, really strengthen is confidence, that our staff across the board, ESPs, everybody, and the superintendent down, really have the confidence as we move forward with it. Uh, we, we know what things are like here in Carson City versus our, uh, district to the north, and we're in a much better position. Um, but there are going to be concerns, um, simple concerns that need to come with that confidence, something as simplistic as "I reside in Washoe." What does that mean as "I show back up"? Not to scare any of you tonight, but that's where some of our staff are at, and they don't quite have that confidence yet. What was really great is, is in the number of emails I received, many were in favor of returning. They, they know we need to get back to it. We want to get back to it. And then their email would always have the "but," and I'm sure you saw plenty of those also as we move forward with that. On another note, um, Ms. Pryor let each of you know that we were members within the NEPF work group. Um, that group has finished its work. We hope to see the new protocols and the new guidance out ASAP, probably sometime next week, fingers crossed. Um, those of us from Carson that sat on the work group are going to meet with Dr. Delphine within Human Resources and talk about our work with that. Um, I am very confident that as we move forward for this year, that teacher and other licensed professionals and their evaluations will not be an issue. Um, as we wrapped up evaluations last year from March, April, and May, um, working with HR, working with district staff was wonderful. Um, everything really ran as smoothly as it truly could. And moving forward with the sign administration we have in place, Ms. Pryor's assistants and others, I don't see teacher evaluations and other licensed professionals being an issue as we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other, uh, association reports?
Seen no other reports from association leaders.
Item six on the agenda is public comment. Comments will be accepted through telephonic participation or through virtual participation via email at publiccomment@carson.k12.nv.us. Comments may be made by members of the public on any matter within the authority of this board. Please note that the public comment will be taken on items marked for possible action before action is taken on such items. And members of the public are encouraged to comment on such items at a time that they are being considered. Although members of the board may respond to questions and discuss issues raised during public comment, no action may be taken on such matter until the matter is placed on the agenda for action at a meeting of the board. In making public comment, speakers are asked to identify themselves for the record. Speakers are further asked to refrain from speaking over each other if participating by telephone. Speakers are asked to limit their comments to no more than three minutes, whether in writing or oral, and not simply repeat comments made by others. This is for discussion only.
Heather, you are unmuted. You can talk.
Good evening, Heather.
Heather, you may need to unmute yourself. Uh, seen no response from Heather. Uh, no other public comment?
Do we have any written comments other than school opening? Okay. Item number seven, informational update on the 31st special session of the Nevada Legislature. Report on items of interest relating to state funding as it applies to education. This is for discussion only. Mr. Feeling. Good evening.
Good evening, trustees. Uh, AJ Feeling for the record. Um, so, uh, if you didn't know, there was a, a special session, 31st special session of, uh, the Nevada Legislature, um, that just, uh, wrapped up on the 19th. Um, this special session was convened due to an estimated $1.2 billion shortfall in revenue, uh, primarily due to the coronavirus or COVID-19 and related impacts. Um, the session began on July 8th and adjourned, uh, on July 19th, which, um, by the record, I, I could see going back to 1989, that was the longest special session, uh, at least since 1989. Um, Assembly Bill Three was the, uh, primary driver of attention. That was the, the bill that had all the funding information, um, where all the, the cuts, um, uh, were made and, and other various maneuvers made to try to fill that $1.2 billion budget hole. Um, and, and just to kind of, to put in perspective what the legislators were dealing with, the, the state budget, basically 83% of the state budget goes between three places. It goes to Health and Human Services, it goes to, uh, Higher Education, and it goes to K-12. So, being most of the state budget, those areas took the most significant hits. Um, Health and Human Services was cut by about $152 million. Higher Education was cut by about $135 million. And K-12 Education was cut by about $162 million. Two late and unexpected changes, uh, in Assembly Bill Three were, um, a $5.2 million cut to the gate, uh, programming statewide. And then the addition, uh, it was kind of a, uh, odd circumstance, the Assembly Bill Three effectively passed, and then the Assembly came back and voided that, and then brought in this additional $50 million of state cares' money coming from, uh, the governor's office. So, with that, um, for, for Carson City School District, we're still working to understand all the cuts and additions, um, waiting to get some solid dollar amounts from the Nevada Department of Education. Um, and it's complicated by the amounts that are listed in Assembly Bill Three often don't coincide with what the reality will be, because oftentimes there's unused funds from Fiscal 20 that they'll be bringing into Fiscal 21. So, um, while we kind of know the outcomes of most of them, um, we don't necessarily know exact dollar amounts, and some have been surprises when we have found them out. So, um, overall, the expected loss in funding, um, from Fiscal 20 to Fiscal 21, this year we have now started, is about $3 million of, of lost funding. And, but that is before the kind of backfilling of these unused funds from the prior year, um, from, uh, from the state. So, looking at just some of the more significant reductions, um, the school safety, school resource officer funding, um, so this is an example. It, it looks as though we would lose about $100,000 of that funding. Um, that, that is not a part of the three SROs that we have been funding for a number of years. The grant Sheriff Furlong originally got for us, this was, uh, these were additional positions. Um, but it appears that this was a grant in the, in Fiscal 20 because it was given out late. There were many positions across the state that were not hired, so there was a significant amount of unused funds. And this is one where we believe there will be enough left of unused funds in Fiscal 20 to backfill and fully fund it in Fiscal 21. So while it looks like we lost $100,000, I think we actually will, um, be whole on that one. Pre-K, so pre-K was a, a difficult one within the, the bill because it was hidden within, and I don't mean hidden in a bad way, but it was within Section 29, which is where NDE's budget was. Um, and the, the reasoning, I, I guess, is that, uh, that bill, uh, primarily talked about K-12 education, and because this was pre-K, they left that in the NDE budget. So in the NDE budget, there was about a $6 million reduction statewide in pre-K funding. However, um, with some funding from the governor's cares funds, um, and some changes in pre-K programming around the state, uh, they were able to backfill that one fully. So pre-K is actually fully funded, um, across the state. There was a reduction in, uh, the Medicaid reimbursement rates, which does affect us. We'll lose about $24,000 a year, or say for next year at least. Um, school facilities money, we had about $393,000 this year. That has been completely zeroed out, um, going into the new year. Uh, class size reduction, so it, it looks like we would have lost about $160,000, which would be a direct impact on the general fund. But because of some unused funds from the prior year, um, that will be reduced to about a $60,000 loss, but that will increase the, uh, the transfer that we make from the general fund to cover class size reduction. Prison and adult ed look to lose about $90,000. CTE programming looks to lose about $35,000. The at-risk counselor grant, we received $50,000. That is down to zero, so we've lost that $50,000. Give it in talented gate, we, uh, I believe have about $340,000 in the last year. That will be reduced by $200,000, uh, next year. So that was that really late, kind of unexpected cut, um, to the gate programming. College and career readiness and work-based learning, those grants were entirely cut, a loss of about $560,000. The two that really garnered the most attention through these cuts, then the Read By Grade Three program statewide was cut. For us, that's about $510,000. And then SB 178 was cut, and that was $1.35 million. Uh, the last, one that impacts our staff, but not necessarily our programming, um, directly, is the teacher-school supply reimbursement. We receive about $93,000, and that was cut entirely. So, uh, with all those cuts, it was also noted then in Section 131.6 that if additional federal funds come to the state, and if you've been watching the news, um, I believe about five weeks ago, um, the, uh, the House of Representatives, US House of Representatives, passed what they called the HEROES Act, which was a $3 trillion stimulus package nationwide, of which $1 trillion was supposed to go to state and local governments, and of that, some portion then to, to schools. Um, that was then sent to the Senate. Senate didn't like it so much, um, and they have made some adjustments. And, uh, yesterday, their, um, uh, kind of rebuttal to that, which I believe they're calling the HART Act, um, is a $1 trillion stimulus package, of which there's $105 billion that's supposed to go to schools. Um, of that, I believe $70 billion, uh, will be dispersed to all schools. The balance will only go to school districts that physically are holding school, that they have kids on campus. So a part of this push to try to get students back in schools is reflected in that. So, um, there will be plenty of negotiations to go around about that still. However, if federal funds do come, um, again, in Section 131.6, um, the state has, uh, noted what the legislature's priorities are, and that is bringing funding back, uh, to SB 178. Second priority is bringing Read By Three, Grid Three, programming back. Um, and then third was working to, um, eliminate the, the need for furlough days for state workers. So, uh, the, if there is a bright side to this, and it's, it's hard to say there's a bright side with cuts, um, the priority of the school districts, the governor and the legislature, was to not impact kind of the base, the base DSA per pupil funding amount that is the biggest driver of our funding for the general fund. And so that was left alone. Um, and quite honestly, I, I don't know how they pulled that off, because that, that seems like a miracle. But there was, uh, a lot of movement of things within the state budget that I clearly don't understand, but they, they were able to make that happen. So, again, we're still learning, um, some of the final amounts, uh, for many of these grants where there were reductions. That information is starting to come in. Um, so while, um, while that's happening, we're, you know, kind of gauging where the impact will be, it is likely, I mean, it's likely at least specifically because of the reduction and class size reduction funding, there will be an impact on the general fund. Um, it's not clear if there will be a further reduction on the general, or impact on the general fund. Um, but as more information comes in, we'll see, um, how that plays out. So, that is all I have for you, and happy to take any questions you may have.
Thanks, AJ. Um, we were dealing and we were budgeting for this $2.3 million deficit before COVID-19 happened. Is that reflected in this $3 million, or is this $3 million in addition to the cut?
Thank you, trustee Casiopo. Um, so the, the $3 million, what the, the, the true kind of focus of these cuts was in the world of state grants. So, over the years, especially in the last decade, um, the legislature, as they have put money into education, it has, the, the primary increases have been in these categorical state grant funds, not so much to the base DSA amounts. So, all of the cuts, um, really are within the world of grants. So that, that's where the, the impact lies.
So just so I'm clear, we still are, you know, just money as a whole, we had to cut, we had to plan for a two, roughly a $2.3 million deficit in our base funding. And then now, I know the number's still flexible, but we're, we're expecting an additional 3,000 in mostly grant funding cuts. Is that correct?
Right. So, uh, it, it's hard to say exactly what the differences are until we know, but I, in, in the ballpark of 2.5 to 3 million in reductions in grant funding, um, are, yeah, that, that's, that's the impact, is just on that grant side.
Thank you, AJ. I was wondering, with this $3 million loss of funds and some of the programs, how does that impact our staff? Are we going to lose staff over this?
So, based on, um, some really amazing work, um, between our grants director, Valerie Dockery, Mrs. Fuson, um, Mrs. Dockery's assistant, Jessica Greener, they have worked out, um, to, to basically that there is almost no impact on positions. And the, the few positions that are in question, um, there are vacancies open that they could slide into. So that is, I mean, considering where I thought we were about two months ago, it's about the best possible outcome I could have imagined. Um, clearly, there are programs that are affected. There's, um, some service and contract costs that have had to go to the wayside, um, to try to, to support some of those positions. Um, but, uh, I, I feel like, to a great extent, we feel pretty whole, um, as far as staffing goes.
It was my understanding that some of these movement of the personnel in these grants, the grant maybe expire in December. Is that correct?
That's a good question, and, and I apologize. I, I should have, uh, mentioned some of that. So, one of the more interesting things about this $50 million that came late is that it must be spent and, and not what we call encumbered. It can't be kind of obligated. It actually has to be spent by December 30th. Um, I think it, while I will take whatever we can get, um, I think oftentimes people forget the, um, or they're just not always aware of the school calendar and, and how our, our timing isn't always quite what every other agency is. So, yeah, that, that is a complicating factor, and, and the funding, I mean, what, we can still work with it. It, it ends up almost being like, uh, like a matching grant in some ways. So, if the money has to be spent by December 30th, within our, um, payroll timing, that's about 41.6% of the cost of someone who works in a school, because of the, the timing of the school year. Um, because our, our school employees, their first paycheck actually for their new year starts on August 15th. It doesn't start in July 15th. So there's actually 10 payrolls until December 30th, and then there's 14 in the, after January 1st. So those first 10 payrolls are about 41.6% of their total cost. So when we're looking at trying to plug and place people, um, we will be able to use that to effectively pay for almost half of their salary. But we just have to be really careful, and, and, and we've been going through this quite a bit, um, with grants, trying to place people and, and account for those specific costs, because once, um, again, we, we have to make sure that that money is spent by that date on our books in order for us to report out and get, get reimbursed for that funding.
Uh, with the money for Read By Three being eliminated, did they eliminate the mandates that went along with that program?
So, um, in, in reading the, the language, the original language of Read By Three, it says that, uh, and I think I'm going to forget the exact word, but basically, any, it, it lays out the requirements for any district receiving Read By Three funding. And so all of those requirements that Read By Three brings, as I would understand, that because no district is receiving Read By Three funds, all of those pieces fall, fall away. So all the, the requirements, the, the reporting, um, all of that would, would be thrown aside for now. I mean, I, I, I think that there's some priority to that in the state. I wouldn't be surprised if it would come back. But at least for this year, as we try to scramble, um, through this year, as we'll hear more about, um, trying to figure this out, we, we shouldn't have to worry about those things.
Thank you.
Thank you, AJ. Did you have a question? Laurel?
Just a question with the cares, that $50 million, is that coming from the CARES Act, is, is what I'm remembering? And in order for that to come back to the schools, is there going to be a grant process for schools to apply for? Is it going to be competitive grants, or how, do you have any idea how that's going to be distributed among the districts in the state?
Yeah, we, we actually just learned, um, that there will be, um, a grant application process. I just learned this day. We had a, a meeting with NDE and all the, the finance officers in the, in the state. Um, so there will be an application process. It will be treated like a, any other grant. And, and part of it, there's, there's requirements and restrictions as to how the money can be spent. So on, on NDE's side, there's some accountability that they have to, to monitor, um, of us. So, um, that is, you know, just a part of it. They are moving, I know, as quickly as possible to get that process. They know that districts are, um, chomping at the bit to, to get to that.
Hopefully, NDE can distribute the grant process quicker than they have with some of the other grant.
Right. Um, absolutely. I, I know NDE is, uh, kind of struggling with a lot of new staff. Again, they've had quite a bit of turnover recently, so, um, on the grant side, they're, they're trying to wrap up this year on top of managing all these changes. So I, I know they are, um, they are certainly working on it. Um, one of the, the unique things about it as well is the, the funding is not, it, it is funding for the district. It, it's not specified to any, any location within the district, any schools. It's just going to be a pot of money. So, um, that'll allow us some flexibility to do the most we can with it.
AJ, thank you for the update. We appreciate your hard work.
Thank you.
I want to take a, a five-minute recess. I just want to confer with Mr. Stokes real quick.
If we're looking at, we have to have this submitted 20 days, so that'd be by August 4th. Right? So if we push the date back to August 24th, then we would have to have a plan submitted into E by August 4th?
So the current rules from the Department of Education is that school districts have to submit their school plan by the 31st of July, this Friday.
Okay.
But, you know, given these conditions, and having Joan Ebert right down the street from us, I could try to tease out that information for the board. And I know that they want students to go back to school. I'm sure that they would work with us. I don't think that they would play hardball of that type to say, "Sorry, you missed the date by three days." So I mean, if the trustees were interested in wanting to call a special board meeting to reconsider, I mean, that's certainly out there. I think we have the flexibility to function in a variety of ways. So I guess I leave that up to you, if you want to discuss that concept, or if you want us to move forward with the information that you've heard essentially, but I do have additional information, just based on some of the questions and feedback that we've had from community members and staff.
I think, why don't you go ahead and give your presentation, and then we'll just discuss it all at once.
So to begin, we did convene a school reopening committee. We also surveyed the committee and staff. And as a result, we have come up really with a plan that we would apply essentially to all grades within the school district. We, as an organization, know how to have school where 100% of our students are in front of teachers that are fully licensed and well-prepared to engage in the act of teaching. However, based on conditions that have been handed down to us by governmental agencies and officials, the 100% returning in person is not available to us right now. It doesn't mean it couldn't be available sometime during the school year. Right now, that's where we stand. Because of the conditions, because we have had schools closed for a nine weeks period of time and through the summer, and because the only way that we had really to provide opportunities for teaching last spring was in some sort of a remote process, that is a condition that if schools were to be closed again, we would have to consider taking charge of that in a different way, so that our students are trained and that we can provide the educational conditions that they're in need of. Then because of our social distancing and then building occupancy rules, we thought that a hybrid schedule might be applicable in our condition. And this is something that's being considered around the state and in other parts of the United States. And this is essentially where students would stay at home for part of their school week, and they would attend in person at our school campuses the other time. And obviously, with any change that we would do, we would have to consider our operations and modify them. So I'd like to go to our online model. And this requires some discussion, I believe, around vocabulary words. We know that there will be some members of our community that don't feel comfortable in sending their children to school. We've received those phone calls, we've received those emails, we've had those conversations with our neighbors, with our friends, our associates. So we don't know really how many students that will be, but we have to prepare for that. As you know, we've had an online program within the school district for a number of years. But because of the possibility of having this remote learning or online learning available to younger students, we've rethought that whole situation of just taking a commercial curriculum and asking a student to sit at a computer for some period of time and work until they finish the course. So as you can see on this slide, the second bullet down, we're going to talk for a moment just about the K-5 application of remote learning. And notice, we're not saying online, but we're going to be using online tools to accomplish K-5 remote learning. So this can occur either in the hybrid model, or it can occur if a family chooses to have their children at home. And so in the early grades, we would actually take a district teacher, and we would then assign that teacher to be in charge of some number of students, and it would likely be at a particular grade level, so that the students didn't have a wide chasm of learning needs. And that way, it would be easier, better for the teacher to be able to prepare. But then for two and a half to three and a half hours a day for four days a week, that teacher would provide those students with teacher-led but remote learning opportunities. And those remote opportunities could be everything from formal lessons about standardized curriculum or items. It could be practice problems, it could be whatever small group assignment, it would be a school classroom, but it would be held remotely. So this is not the same concept, again, as sitting down in front of a computer for some period of time and simply working independently by yourself through a curriculum. This would actually be working with other students. You'd be using a platform like Google Classroom, and that teacher would be in charge of progress, monitoring the students, and also working individually to help that student or students as a group. Is there any, are there any questions about this particular model? Because we see this as a way to manage those students that might want to come to school but are worried about maybe having their children infected because of the virus, but it's a little different maybe than what your perspective of online curriculum might look like.
There is a question.
I was wondering, the online curriculum, there's a cost associated with that, is that correct?
So there is a cost if we are using, and you'll see on the second and third bulletin, we have edgenuity, and also our curriculum for the 9th through 12th grade is one that we purchased through Pearson. And so there are per pupil costs for those. The 5 through, the K through 5 groups, they're, those would be lessons that are presented, developed and presented by our teachers.
I guess this is a question for AJ. Depending on the amount of students that elect to go online, do we have money for that?
So we annually budget funds for online programming. Recently, we've used a company called Pearson. And that has been anywhere between $100,000 and $300,000 that comes out of Ed Services' budget. The city, Carson City, has reached out to us, and they have themselves received about $10 million of CARES Act funding. And one of the ways that they can use it specifically is to help school districts with the cost of distance, making distance education happen. So at the Board of Supervisors' meeting next week, they'll be considering our request, and a large part of our request is a significant increase to the costs of the services to provide distance education services.
That'd be great, thank you.
I do have a question.
Joe, and then Lupe.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
So, Mr. Stokes, on the online, whether they choose to go remote learning the whole time or during the hybrid model, I'm assuming, because we don't know how many students those will be...
Joe.
I guess my question is, assuming anyone's doing remote learning, we may have, say, I'm just making up numbers, six students from Seelager that want to do remote learning, and other schools are going to have larger amounts or whatnot. So the online's going to kind of be a composite of the entire district, and how will that be broken up by numbers, in terms of teacher-student ratios?
We see that trustee Cassiop as a possibility, that in order to make a full contingent, say, of 4th grade students, we may have to combine students from other schools. But because they're going to be in attendance at home, that really doesn't create anything except a record-keeping condition that we could set up.
And would we, and would we have, I assume we still have some kind of limitations to a class size, just so the teacher can get to all these students? Or, you know, do we have kind of an approximate, okay, this teacher's going to be responsible for 25 or 30 online 4th grade students?
Tasha, you want to take that?
Thank you, Mr. Cassiop, for the question. I think right now, one of the main things that we're looking to really set in motion those particular plans is getting feedback from our families through their parent intent form. We do know that our kinder through 5th graders cannot sit or should not be expected to sit in front of a computer screen for seven hours a day. So you may have a remote learning teacher, teaching 1st grade, who has two different sessions, whether teaching an AM session on Google Classroom of maybe 20 students, and then a PM session of maybe 20 students. But it's really going to be determined by how many families choose the full 100% remote learning option, and then we'll come up with those plans. Especially as Superintendent Stokes said, when it comes to whether or not we have to take and pull students from multiple different schools, or whether or not we can actually have a full-time 1st grade remote learning teacher at each school, for instance. It's going to 100% depend upon the number of students who enroll in that remote learning program.
Okay, thank you.
That was my question, so thank you.
Richard, and then Laurel.
With the online learning, is there going to be a difference in what the students are being taught versus online, in-class, and remote learning? And does that create a situation where some students may be getting ahead of other students or falling behind other students? So I was just kind of trying to get an idea of how that's going to work, if they're going to be taught basically the same information at the same time?
And thank you, trustee Varner. One of our goals is to have our grade-level PLCs work very closely together, so that whether a student is working 100% remote from home, or working within a hybrid model, coming to school two days a week and being at home the other three, that they're utilizing the district-adopted curriculum to teach, to learn the standards that are required by the state. And that, in reality, the only difference between a remote program and a hybrid program is location of the direct instruction. Again, the intent is so that, you know, the students who are at home are still receiving that direct instruction, probably, it's looking like through Google Meets right now, and having them interact with the teacher that way versus sitting in front of their teacher. So the answer to your question should be, if we do our job well, there should be no difference between the level of instruction, the level of rigor, and the amount of materials that a student is being exposed to or working with. So we are required by the state to continue to teach all of the state's standards. Obviously, due to the circumstances, we are going to work with our teachers in identifying what the true power standards are, what are the essential understandings that students need to know and be able to do to, you know, to be promoted to the next grade level. So you might see a little, a little less of the, I don't want to say fluff or fun stuff, but you might just see a streamlining of what goes on in the classroom, because there'll be less instructional time, direct instructional time. But the amount of standards, and the amount of instruction, and the amount of learning is expected to remain at the same level, and at the same level of rigor. So that's our intent, is to have our teachers really work closely together to make sure that that happens.
If I could, I was more concerned, I think, about the difference between the online, the commercial thing, versus what we're going to be providing.
So the online and commercial materials, as Mr. Stokes will get to, in the, being used in the middle school and in the high school level, they are approved by the state to meet and teach all of the standards that are required by their individual courses. So although it might look a little different than what a student is learning in the classroom, because obviously our teachers have some autonomy of what it looks like, as long as they're teaching the standards, those online materials through edgenuity and through Pearson are approved to have met the state's standards and the requirement, again, for level of rigor and depth and breadth of knowledge.
And just a question, it probably is broken up by K through 6, or K through 5 and 6 through 12 with the different curriculums, but is there going, if parents opt for the full remote option like this, will they, will it be anticipated that they are enrolled for a full semester? Or, you know, I'm just thinking, we're all hopeful that things will change, and possibly winter semester, we can come back fully. It will, will we expect them to stay in it for the semester, or will there be some flexibility with the K through 5 more than the upper levels?
So within our K through 8 system or plan, students would have the ability, and again, if we're doing a good job pacing well, to come back in seat or to go out full-time remote at a quarter. We're asking them to commit to a quarter at a time. At our high schools, because the model is different, we'll be implementing our state-approved, our previously state-approved distance education model for any of our students who choose to go 100% online. And in that model, our students only take one class at a time, potentially two. Sometimes we like take a math class and spread it over the course of a semester, while then they take their other classes in like three- to four-week chunks. Because those, because that high school model looks different, students are required to commit to a semester, because they cannot flex in and out, it's just the schedule doesn't match. But in this particular model, for K-8 students, there would be the ability to move between those service models.
Tasha, just a follow-up to Richard's question. I appreciate what you said about, you know, wanting everybody to kind of pace the same. That makes sense to me, but, and I trust that you guys are going to find a way to make that happen. But I am curious, when we're saying kids doing remote learning are going to be, say, two and a half to three hours a day, younger students even less time, how are they going to keep up with, say, two days a week when students are going to be in school for, say, six hours a day or six and a half? It seems like there's some extra time where you could teach something.
So the model that we intend to employ for education is a flipped classroom model. So even though our students will be at home, they will still be engaged actively in learning. When it's a flipped model, typically what you see going on with the asynchronous learning, which is learning by yourself, is they're watching maybe pre-recorded videos that have been posted by their teachers, or videos that their teachers themselves have made, introducing concepts and topics, et cetera. So, and then when, in the hybrid model, when students come in seat, typically what they're doing when they're working with their teacher is holding discussion groups, doing reading groups, participating in labs, doing some hands-on activities or project-based learning. So when you're a full-time remote student, you still do those things, but the way you do them looks a little different. You use online tools in a blended model. So you might be having a discussion in Google Classroom with some of your peers, versus it being a teacher-led discussion. So there's just tools and strategies that our teachers will be learning during our professional learning days, how to employ that, so that students are still actively engaged, whether they're at home or whether they're in person, and that, again, the amount of instruction, direct instruction, and standards that we're required to cover are covered.
Yeah, sorry, just one more thought. So during the asynchronous, during the asynchronous part of the remote learning, if a student is hung up on something, is there a teacher available that could, you know, reach out, almost like a, you know, a help desk kind of thing?
So our hope would be, again, to have our remote, our teachers who are assigned to remote learning, have them have that opportunity to have that teacher time, and also to utilize parapros to support our students in that manner.
I promise this is my last one, but I'm wondering, in here, it says that you're asking parents to respond by August 2nd if they're going to participate in the online learning model. How are you going to accomplish that? It's like five days away. Are you going to email, mail?
So we have created a parent intent form, a parent intent form, that's a Google form, that if and when the board approves the plan, and when we update that form to reflect the plan that is approved by the board, it will be launched to our families or sent out to our families. And Dan Davis has been working with me to put together, and Mr. Stokes to put together, that parent information piece. So we will be launching that out to our folks, asking our parents to log in. It takes only, literally, less than a minute to fill it out for one student. My secretary filled it out today to see how long it would take, or she did it on her phone. So we made it phone accessible. And then if a family doesn't have access to technology or be able to do it on a phone, that they can call their school, and the school or the district office can help them fill that in. But that goes into a Google form, and then we can actually separate that out and make sure it gets to all the departments who need that information, as well as the schools, and then we can start appropriately scheduling the students in Infinite Campus to reflect that decision.
And I don't, I don't think it'll be limited to that date, correct? So if somebody missed that date, they could still enroll their child?
Correct. And we have it in Spanish as well. The hope is that we get that information back as soon as possible. So thank you for asking that question. And the reason why is that the schools do need to have time to get those schedules finalized. Transportation needs time to know how many students are going to be on each bus. And within Infinite Campus, it has a sophisticated tool that's going to allow us to separate students out into cohorts. And it supposedly, we haven't tested it yet, and it's new, but it supposedly takes families into consideration, so that families, whether they're separated or attend at three separate schools, that they're placed into the same cohort. So we have to, at the district level, be able to do all of those things, to make sure we're ready to go the first day of school, or before the first day of school, because we want to, of course, notify families as soon as possible what cohort they're in, et cetera. So we are going to try to do a very quick turnaround on that. But you're correct, after we do our scheduling at the district level, schools have the ability to remotely, or not remotely, excuse me, to manually, is what I'm looking for, manually change that selection, if parents are not able to get their information in by the date we requested.
So what are we doing about parents that don't have internet access? Or do we have, where would they go? Because we used to have the library, where a lot of the parents would go that didn't have computers or limited access.
So at this point in time, we're asking them to simply just call their school or the district office, and a staff member will be able to fill that form in for them.
And we have staff in the buildings now?
We have staff in the district, so my secretary and Dr. Medina's secretary, and Jose, who's at our front office, who is bilingual. So we'll be able to assist until the school's come back in session on Monday, their employees should be back in.
Well, they'll have to call the district office, not their school.
They can call the district office, and within that form, again, if it's approved, then it actually has that link to that phone number, et cetera.
And what are you guys going to do for parents that haven't returned forms, or, so that, are we going to track them down and find out if they're still with the district, and they just didn't hear about it, because it is happening during summer?
Right. Well, we will actually end up running what we need to do on our end to make those assignments, those cohort assignments. And again, it will have to be manually changed after the fact. So we'll continue to track them down as we can, but there is, again, some timeliness in terms of us being able to take all the steps that we have to, to be prepared for our kids to come back. So we'll continue to send school messengers, we have a release that will go out to our news media, we'll do all of our, you know, typical things that we do to notify our families. Most of them, I would say, who are really concerned and have wanted to go online, have been calling the district office already and have had this information already, many, many of them. So it's a matter of just making sure that we have that documentation, and we can, we can make the appropriate modifications to Infinite Campus.
Just another question, because you, or, I guess, to follow up with it, you said your secretary filled it out on her phone.
Her phone.
So if it's available on phone, most people, even if they don't have internet access with a computer, do have a phone that they can access and fill it out. So as long as we make it, that link to the phone really accessible through everywhere that we possibly can, I think parents should be able to figure that out.
I think that probably another thing is, every year, we have families who show up on the first day, that we kind of have to scramble and get the things that weren't done in the spring. And so, I mean, schools will work with families to do that.
Absolutely. And I've probably answered several questions that Mr. Stokes will get to.
Actually, that was great. I think you guys covered just about everything on this slide. The only, the only thing I would add is that if, for some reason, everything went south, and the governor said, "We have to close schools down again," the importance of this process is that we would have a way to continue on in, and not hand out packets like we did last spring. So this would be a much better system for offering information and education in general. Part of the reason for asking you to help change the start date of school is so that we can take this particular model and provide some additional training for our teachers, so that they're confident and ready to move forward, should they, and they will, they'll all have this, this experience of working remotely with students. Okay, so...
I just want to make a comment.
Yeah, go ahead.
Just, just, I'm thinking, because I've had a lot of friends who were debating what to do, whether to homeschool, whether to do it, because there is so much uncertainty with it, and concerned, because some people didn't have the best experience with remote learning in our crisis state, which everyone was in crisis. But I think I really like this remote, full remote option, because it, especially for the K through 5, because they are learning the standards, and when they're able to transition back to full school, it should be fairly seamless. And I think there will be less gaps in what they might learn if they went to possibly whatever other curriculums there might be. It might be a better transition for the kids. So I just want to thank you guys for putting this out there, because I think this does give a really good option for families that are concerned and do want to do the full remote for a variety of different reasons.
I do want to thank you for that comment, and I do just want to reiterate what we have talked about numerous times, is our teachers and our administrators do know, this is not packet learning. This is not what fourth quarter was. This is true hybrid blended learning, even for the remote students. It's a blended learning model, where students are using online materials and interaction with teachers, true interaction, timely, face-to-face type interaction, even though it's on Google Meets. So, yes, I think it's important for our families to know that.
Okay, thank you. So a hybrid, when we're talking about an educational model, is simply one where students may attend either in-person and on-campus, and a combination of at-home or remote learning. So when I say at-home, I'm going to say if someone happens to be in a daycare facility, that would be synonymous. It just, it creates another condition, but when I say at-home, it means not on-campus. And, you know, just, just for your consideration, the reopening committee, and this is going back now, almost two months, so you got to know that the conditions that we were working under at that time were slightly different than they are today. Even so, at the time, a hybrid model seemed to be a way to allow students to come back to school, to have interaction with their friends, to see their teachers, to play, to grow, to experience human interaction like what we get it and offer at school. grow, to experience human interaction like what we get it and offer at school. So there are some advantages, but I think we would all agree that face-to-face learning is still the best situation where students are in front of caring and well-qualified teachers. Given our conditions though, and as we're contemplating this hybrid model, our reopening committee agreed to a plan that looks like two days in school and on-campus and three days remote or at home. Now, in my third bullet there, I said, "Or not." Obviously, this is a place where you as members, elected members of the community, will have an opportunity to put forward your ideas, your thoughts. There are a number of different kinds of hybrid schedules. They are happening in different places. Lyon County has got a plan that's different than this one. Douglas County School District has a plan that's different than this one. One of the reasons that this particular model was selected by our, our reopening committee was the, the committee members had heard from their friends and acquaintances that they hoped that whatever hybrid schedule was put forward would be predictable, something that wouldn't require them to always change their daycare, or something that wouldn't be hard to understand or to follow. So that is a relative reason. I, I think people who may have gone to school under a block system or, you know, attended a college system of any kind, they would say, "Well, I can figure that out." Others might be a different experience. And so whether it's the one that is the most preferred by the board or by the community, it was the one that was most preferred by our reopening committee. And so I offer that insight just so that you kind of know why that was put forward. Again, at the time, if you think about how this remote model is going to look, it was essentially established to take our full student body and to half them, or to cut them in half, number-wise. So we have two cohorts and those two cohorts then would alternate days at school or off-campus. And so essentially that if, if we have a school of 600 students, on any given day, 300 of those students approximately, give or take a few on each side of that 50% number, are going to be on campus. And so that changes the dynamics of the school significantly. It changes our operations for transportation, for nutrition, for the teachers in general, and certainly for the families. So we also talked about a plan that would be applicable to all levels. And so this cohort hybrid model can really be applied to all of the grade levels, K through 12. And the thing that changes then at each of the levels is just how the material is presented and how it's organized. Then, of course, the, the 100%, or if we were to have 100% remote learning, this particular hybrid model does prepare our students and our staff for being able to move to that should the conditions require us. Within this model, special populations are supported. If the two days at school and the three days at home is approved, then we would have no transportation for our students on Monday. If there were any conditions where we would have a special education student that needed transportation, that would obviously be different and based on that IEP. Our distribution of meals or nutrition services would probably look something like what we had last spring. And I know that our folks have been working on those problems to work out those situations and conditions. Obviously, we would still honor and expect to have honored all of our staff contracts. However, what would be different from last spring, and that is, we would expect staff to come to the buildings and be surrounded by their colleagues, by their tools, by the, the great internet system and electronic system that we have through the school district to help them with all aspects of their work. Obviously, we would take any staff member who has health conditions or concerns, that we would work with them to make sure that we're able to manage their concerns as well. There is a good chance, and I'll just use transportation as a what-if, if there's no bus driving on Monday, our bus drivers may have some different assignments. We may have to repurpose them and that's permissible under this, this process. And it would just be a matter of us working with the transportation department and there might even be work that can be done within the transportation department. It's just not driving the bus that day. Might, might be cleaning the bus or repairing things that can be done by the driver. So we'll, we'll work through that. Another consideration in any model that we have would be building sanitation. And I, I did get some good questions from community members asking whether or not the systems and the processes that we are using are actually part of the, the actual killing of the COVID-19 virus. And so the materials that we're using, I want to say to you folks and also to the community that those have all been vetted by the EPA and they are specific for killing viruses like the SARS virus and also COVID-19. And we're also using these electrostatic misters, which it's just a delivery tool, but what it does is it actually coats whatever the material or the mist is being sprayed onto, creates an electrostatic charge that allows the material to stick to a greater degree to the surfaces. And so it's highly efficient. In addition to that, we're, have been working with McKinstry. I know you are familiar with those folks over time. Three times a day, we will have a cold air exchange where the, the air in the building is actually evacuated and fresh air from the outside is pumped in. We'll be using a specialized type of filter for that process. And this filtration process has been identified and approved by the American Society of Heating, Refrigerating and Air Conditioning Engineers. And certainly is backed up by our friends from McKinstry. So that, along with our regular cleaning process, which has been identified to be extremely productive and efficient and effective, we believe we have a good handle on taking what's necessary out of the building, as it were, by cleaning it appropriately and providing the sanitation process. So then, just to, just to explain a little bit further, there are other hybrid models, should the board want to talk about them. And if, if, this would be a great time to have that discussion.
Joe has a question.
Thanks, Richard. As you know, several people were concerned about, you know, the, the disinfectant, primarily the, the mist came up. So you're saying it's been vetted by the EPA, so we're convinced it's safe, there's no underlying hazards associated with this mist application or any other desanitizing efforts we're planning on putting into place.
At the present time, we believe that it's safe to use and it has been approved by the EPA.
If you wanted to discuss other potential models, I've talked to a lot of different people around the community and you're right, it's a mixture of what people want. A lot of people I've talked to prefer a two-day on, two-day off. Some of the teachers prefer that and one of the comments was that it would be less transitions for the kids by going two days in a row instead of every other day. And then there's, like we talked about, the AM/PM model. And we understand we talked that, you know, the busing issue there. And then, yeah, some people want a week on, a week off. So I didn't know if we wanted to kind of kick that around and see if there's any thoughts about the other board members, what their thoughts are, or if they've talked to other people who.
I would just suggest, I mean, instead of saying week off, because it'll be remote learning or online learning. So I want to make sure that if we say off, that sends a different kind of message, so.
As, as we've had an opportunity to talk with principals, some concerns that they had about having too much time between teacher interaction is just this concept of, of slowing down the learning process and, and having the, the interaction with staff regularly enough so that there's always this, kind of like going to school now or, or in, in a traditional sense where you know every morning you're going to get up and you're going to go to school and you're going to have to be responsible and accountable for your, your lessons. And so, yeah, that was, that was probably the piece that drove, well, in, in addition to just being able to predict what the schedule will be every day. That was one of the things that was important, I think, to the principals and they, they wanted me to share that with you.
Yeah, I appreciate, I had the same conversations with people about different schedules. And I, personally, I don't know what, what a better schedule is and what isn't. I do like the idea of minimizing the amount of days students are not with a teacher. So like a two-day-on, two-day-off model, potentially you're going to have kids that go to school Tuesday, Wednesday, then they have Thursday, Friday, Saturday and Sunday off before they encounter a teacher again. If there was a miraculous way to pull it off, probably my favorite schedule would be AM and PM. I don't know how you, you know, other than drive faster, I don't know how you resolve the busing issue. I'm just joking about that. But, um, you know, in my head, I thought, boy, if you could get an AM and a PM schedule going, would there be a possibility of busing all the kids in the morning, leaving them at the schools, busing them back in the afternoon? You have half the kids in the building and somehow you can accommodate the other half of the kids outside the building. Obviously, there's some issues with that, but, you know, then you get, you're, even though you're half days, you get into the school five days a week. And I don't want to belabor it anymore. I'm not sure I'm a fan of the week on, week off thing, but I understand the rationale there as well.
And I, I really think no matter what plan the district falls on, there's going to be a lot of people who are unhappy with it. I mean, there's just no way to make everybody happy. I think that it's just that we do it mindfully in a way that we're supporting the kids the best we can. And I think that that's, that's the big thing. I think that's what we're all struggling with a little bit.
Go ahead, Tasha.
I just want to make a note that from an instructional standpoint, the reason for having students have the two days a week and having the remote learning days separated out is because in, in a true flipped model classroom, the intent is for students to access the materials, the information, the curriculum typically on the remote day. And then when they're in-person or even in a high, or even on, on our remote learning, if they're just meeting with the teacher on the Google meets, that's when you're really digesting the information. That's when your, your students are being able to ask questions, they're being able to do a hands-on type project that reinforces the learning concepts that they were learning through the asynchronous learning. So from a learning perspective, from an instructional perspective, that's why the model that we've put forth in front of you, we feel, is best for students. So I just want to make sure that that, that is understood by people. That's why we put that forward.
Probably also just speak to the fact, like what Trustee Cassiopa was saying is the students will still have contact with curriculum and their teacher on those days that they're remote learning. So there will be that contact in whatever form it is that comes together, correct?
So on remote learning days, typically students will have to, for attendance purposes, have to at least electronically have content or contact with the teacher. It won't be live contact. So again, having the every other day for either for remote learning, because remote learning, remember, especially K5, the only difference between the hybrid schedule and the 100% remote is whether or not you're meeting Google meets with your teacher or whether or not you're meeting in person. So the, the activities that go on during those synchronous learning opportunities, meaning we're all learning together, that's where, again, students are really having the ability to discuss with their peers, discuss with their teacher, again, to do a hands-on type of a learning opportunity to really start to, to take the learning that they've done asynchronously on the remote days and put it into action. So that's, so in terms of having contact with teachers, yes, they will have daily contact, but it won't be live, real-time contact on remote learning days.
I was just thinking here, if we have a lot of kids or parents elect to put their kids in remote learning or online learning full-time, and now with the new social distancing guideline by the governor for K8, you know, three feet, I would anticipate that would allow us to bring more kids into the classroom. So I'm just wondering if there's enough kids that elect to go remote or online, if there's a possibility to bring the kids who won't come back full-time, all of them, bring them all back full-time if there's enough distance, especially from K8. Does that make sense? I mean.
I was wondering the same thing as soon as I went, as soon as the three-foot change in guidelines came out, because I've been particularly worried about the K through second grade kids, just because they do so much better with in-person. And it, I'd love to get feedback if we can, and I know we've got such a short turnaround and of course it's last-minute change in guidelines that we requested in July. But if there's any way we can look at those, because those are smaller, how, I know when we did six feet, we looked at nine to 10, maybe 11 kids. And, and if we do three feet, could we get 20? And would that be a classroom size for some of those smaller classroom? I mean, kindergartens have been usually 25, but it, it, could, could we look into that? Is there time for us to look into that and see about those? Because those are the kids I'm worried about for a variety of different reasons with the daycare options that they, oh, that's so weird to hear myself on feedback. But, you know, when they, when they're going to a variety, and, and at least my way of thinking is if they're with their same, you know, classroom each day, you are limiting the contact that they're having by having them go three days to a variety of different care facilities or, or childcare arrangements. So I don't, I don't know if we have enough time to look into that or how that might be something to do, which I know is totally a wrench.
I'm wondering too, is if, if the board elects to go the hybrid model tonight and then we find out that there's a lot of kids who want to go remote or online, could the model change?
So one thing I'd like you to keep in mind is that we still are funded or staffed at a teacher-to-student ratio. So although that teacher then may now have 20 students in the classroom or 15 students, and if they're in there full-time, then that teacher is addressing those students full-time. That means the other 25, or the other 10 students that were assigned to that classroom have to be taught by another teacher somewhere. So then you could have, if you did that, an online teacher trying to serve 50, 60 students. And I think we have to take that into consideration. I mean, just, I, I know it sounds like it's a simple solution, but when you look at the fact that the other students still, who are 100% remote, still need to be served by a teacher, then that makes that disproportionate. The other thing that really concerns me, and we, we chatted about this earlier, is, is subs and still having to socially distance. Our elementary teachers would tell you, our elementary principals would tell you right now that our traditional approach to having shortage of subs is to combine classrooms. So, okay, I'm now running full-time classroom, I have 20 students. AJ has 20 students, he calls in sick today, I can't get a sub. We cannot put 40 kids in my classroom. So continuing with the hybrid model still allows us then some flexibility in that in case we did need to combine those two classes, because now I can still maintain that three-foot of distancing. So just something that we talked about and digested today.
And I might add that we have expected all along, at the start of this school year, that that things could change during the year. And so with that expectation, we're ready to either go, like I say, 100% remote or 100% in-person. And so just when that would occur and how that could occur, we would certainly keep you folks in the loop and study out these new opportunities or conditions. But we have not really had a chance to vet them fully. We, we haven't had a chance to talk through all of the conditions that might exist that might violate a teacher's contract. And we would want to make sure that we've, you know, fully looked into these conditions, even though it is kind of exciting to think that, hey, here's a glimpse of getting back to more traditional school.
Well, and I was just going to, that's what I was going to say is, you know, we could look at really prioritizing those primary grades. But what that's really going to do is move teachers from upper grades down, and then you're going to have larger grades in what, yeah. And so then when we get back to coming back 100%, which is going to happen eventually, then we're going to have classrooms with high number 30, 40s, you know. I mean, it's just, our schools are so full in that capacity. It's a real challenge, I think.
I, I would add to that, too, that even though the governor tonight said three-feet separation is okay, I'd, I'd want to see where he's getting that from, because I'd still be cautious when the CDC is saying, yeah, I know, but everybody's changing their mind every week. So, yeah, I know, it's absurd. But, you know, so I think we want to be cautious getting too close, because you're going to have those same concerns.
Well, and we have teachers with real concerns about their health and, and real underlying health concerns that they don't want to necessarily make public. But there are some teachers who are legitimately scared. They have some real health situations that they're scared. So, I mean, I think that we have to take all of that into consideration.
We're still on the hybrid model, and this is just a visual of what it might look like. If, if you're maybe still wondering about what the concept looks like, if you'll notice that the plan that we're putting forward has Monday being a day where both cohorts or both groups are at home or remote. Notice that we've identified a teacher-to-student portion of that day by a homeroom class. We're asked in any hybrid model to teach social and emotional learning and other considerations. So this would be an opportunity for teachers to check in. If maybe the teacher had delivered a social-emotional lesson and there's an opportunity to do some private tutoring or some one-on-one work with a student, that would also be an opportunity for that to occur. Because there is this additional consideration for our teachers to be able to prepare themselves to teach remotely. Monday would be available for our folks to have that time to prepare. And that would be an important aspect of that day. They'd be at school with their student, or sorry, with their colleagues, with their principals. They'd be able to discuss as a group what maybe individuals need and to also utilize maybe some of the skills and curriculum even of our specials teachers. And then for the students in Group One, for example, they would be on campus Tuesday and Thursday. And then Group Two would be on campus Wednesday and Friday. We would be, I, I think it's important to let our community know that we have to come up with about a 50% split. And we don't want people to game the system. We don't want them saying, hey, I'd rather go on cohort Tuesday, cohort twos, schedule or something else. We're trying to keep those in such a way that we're able to manage the number of students that we'll have. Are there any questions about what we're trying to accomplish here with, with just the operational piece of this particular hybrid model?
You know, Mr. Stokes, I just think one of the things that, one of the themes in our many emails we've received as sanitation, and I think just probably highlighting the fact that every single night, these classrooms are being sanitized and that the touchpoints will be cleaned throughout the days, throughout the school day regularly. I just think, I think that's something important to talk about, because that's one of the things that a lot of people had wrote us emails about.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. Excellent point. This is a little hard to read, and I think you have copies in your packet. But it's just simply a way to show how an elementary day might look. And it's very general. Essentially, it follows the same thing that you just saw in terms of the Mondays being what they are with the students, in all of the students in the district in a remote situation. And then the rest of the day looks pretty much the same. Now, our teachers and our principals are going to be tasked with organizing the daily operations so students are still in this condition of remaining socially distant from each other. And of course, there's the question about how do we infuse our specials teachers into a model like this? And I, I know that we've got some really outstanding individuals on our staffs that have been part of our reopening committee, who have given some ideas, who have trained specifically for some of these situations. But it's likely to be, rather than worked into each, or into one general schedule, it would be, be worked into the, the individual school schedule so that it works for that site. Those specials are music, PE, and computers.
Could you take a question from Laura, real quick?
Sure.
Just a follow-up question, Mike, to your sanitation every night, making sure that people know that. I saw on Facebook that we're hiring custodians. And what's our plan if we have custodians call in sick or we have a shortage of them? Who, who's going to help make sure that it's cleaned every night if we have some who call, call in sick or are unable to be there?
We have in the past, sorry, we have in the past been able to hire some sub-custodians or have a pool of sub-custodians. Mr. Fuhlen, go ahead.
Sorry. Thank you, Mr. Stokes. I would say our custodial staff is no stranger to being short-staffed. We have struggled ever since I've been here with, I, I don't know if there's ever been a point in time we've actually been fully staffed. So we have a, a number of individuals that will help, that maybe at one school, that help across at other schools. And also our operations coordinator, Dave Silva, and a number of his staff, they will go out and fill in. So Mark Corna got a, a group of custodial leaders together in the district to talk about what, what they think they can do and how, how they can cover. And they, they think even, even if they are short-staffed at points, they will be able to make the rounds and get everything done. So, you know, if it, if it's something where it's a matter of, you know, there's, because there isn't enough staff, I mean, truly a shortage where we start after doling out over time and things like that. I mean, we will do those sorts of things to make sure this is not a concern and that safety is, is considered where it needs to be.
I'd just like to say, if I could, real quick, whatever we can do to make the staff feel safe is what we need to do naturally, and the students. Because President Walker's exactly right. A lot of the emails we've gotten from the teachers have that concern that they don't think that they're going to be safe, or there's not going to be no sanitation. There's some concern about the sanitation that is going to be used. One person wrote about the teacher breathing the fumes all day, if that's going to be any long-term effects. So whatever we can do, because I think everybody on the board here has the best interest in the health and safety of the staff as a main priority and the students. So whatever we can do to assure them that we are trying to make them safe.
This slide shows a hybrid model for the middle schools. Again, there's some very predictable components. Monday looks the same as the other levels. And then based on the cohort group, they would attend on their given day. And the schedule rotates so that those individual groups are able to receive instruction according to the teacher's preparation. And typically, a middle school schedule is a, a straight six or seven-scheduled day where both core subject matter and also electives are scheduled in such a way that teachers are able to work through the day with a predictable number of students. So that you don't have 60 students in your math class and then 12 in the next math class. There has to be a, a logical process that occurs so that both teachers and students have good advantage in the classroom. And then with the high school model, our discussions with principals and staff there have resulted in a, a maintenance of the block schedule. So this has pluses and minuses in, in my mind. The, the plus is that our students really do know how to operate within a block system. It provides for longer periods of time in one place. So in other words, the first period might be scheduled for approximately 95 minutes, whereas if you were in a straight scheduling model like what I just described in the middle school, that class might only last for 47 minutes to 50 minutes. So there are certain classes that benefit from that longer period of time. But the downside is that you really only see that one teacher once during the week. And so if the student is absent, it's essentially like missing an entire week of school for that student. So there, there are some positives and negatives. One of the positives that I see is that if we were to go back to 100% in-person scheduling, it would be seamless and the students really would be able to carry right on with, with their block schedule. But for every one item that you can maybe think of as a positive, there's likely to be a negative as well. I don't know if there's any questions about either of these two schedules as a possibility?
Trustee Creeny?
Just had a question, I, I guess, concern, obviously, health and safety, I've said it before, is my biggest concern here. One of the things you want to do with the virus is keep the kids as static as you can. In K through five, kids are going to stay in one room and separated. Six through 12, there's really no getting away. They're going to be, what are we going to do with the hallways and crowded hallways, things like that? That's a, that's a concern. Entering and, you know, and exiting the day.
Sure.
Are they, are we going to do some different scheduling where different classes get out at a certain time, possibly?
So in the high, or in the middle school, rather, think about that one and compared to what we're proposing here for the high schools. If we have Carson Middle School approximately 700 students on any given day, those students are going to be changing approximately six classes. So they're bumping into a lot of kids. This particular model for the high school really only has students changing classes three times in any given day. So there's, there's a slight reduction there, just in terms of who the kids are going to come in contact with. However, that argument falls apart, because when you have lunch, you're going to go to your peer group and you're going to interact with whom you interact. So I don't think there's a good answer. Certainly, we don't, we aren't trying to say to any one student or teacher, you know, there's not a lot we can do for you. But in, when conditions are regular, our kids get sick with the flu, they get sick with colds. I mean, there's a lot of contamination, just from a hygiene perspective, that's going to occur. I know, again, it's not like comparing apples to apples, but it's, it's going to be different, I think, Mr. Creeny, to make a, a whole bunch of different schedules to meet all of the needs of all the students.
So, Mr. Stokes, is it possible? I know when I worked at Carson Middle School, it was almost like teams of teachers kind of worked together in grade levels. It's almost like they could team up. It is possible the teachers could be the ones to rotate rooms. If you made a cohort and they have the same math, science, English. I mean, it takes a little bit more coordination, but I think what you just described is a nightmare to me. How do we keep those kids safe? And, and ask me who worked in the hallways of Carson Middle School. It's insane getting through there. You know what I mean? It's just, that concerns me.
Tasha, few some for the record. We did have that discussion with our middle school principals. There was a real concern on behalf of our teachers with regards to the in-person days and having to travel to where kids are in terms of lack of materials. How do you set up a science lab in a math classroom or an English classroom, or wherever that student may happen to be? How do you run CTE labs if you're not in the CTE lab? So although, again, could it be done? Yes. But would it restrict what our students actually had access to, to actually do that project-based learning? Those are hand-on, hands-on activities. I think instead, what could be done is, you know, schools could work to coordinate release times by wing. You know, this, this wing's going to release one minute earlier than that wing to try to minimize the interaction of students in the hallway versus doing that.
And I think that would help, even if you did like odd-number rooms and even-number rooms. But either way, some kind of coordination needs to happen. I mean, to have that many middle schoolers just roaming free in the halls and then expect them to socially distance in hallways which are too narrow to even socially distance. It's just, it's a nightmare. I can't imagine what they're going to do to supervise that.
Well, they are all going to be wearing face coverings, and they will be passing each other quickly, because the passing periods are not very long. So it's not a lot of, I mean, I understand it's contact, but it's that fast contact passage. And could you set up protocols that, you know, you enter the classroom and you sanitize your hands as soon as you walk in, then any of the doors that they've touched, they're, they're cleaned off from when they come into the classroom?
And luckily, at this point in time, obviously, one of the positive, classes have full kinds of things, is that we are working to level the enrollment between EVMS and Carson Middle. And believe it or not, Carson Middle's enrollment does look to be about 100 or so down from last year, and Eagle Valley's is about 100 up. But now, when you take that 1,100 and you cut it in half, you're talking about 550 students in that building at any given time. So you have that as well, I mean, just to kind of paint a picture. So if anyone's picturing 1,100, almost 1,200 kids passing, now just picture 550 kids passing. I mean, it's a significant reduction, so a lot less, lot, lot less congested halls.
I just thought, I mean, I didn't even think about the passing periods until that was brought up, and I think that is a concern.
This slide shows our goal and our expectation for transportation on our buses. Average size of our bus is right around 80-some students. And this is a nice graphic that we borrowed from Washoe County. And it shows in the green a potential seating arrangement that would maximize to about the tune of 50% of our bus capacity, how students would sit and still try to be socially distant. It would be challenging. We're going to rely on teaching the students through our bus drivers where they should sit. We're also going to ask that our families who live outside of walk zones to register their students with the school district in terms of planning to use a bus. We're also going to encourage families to drive their students to school, if they can, if they have that ability. And we're going to be very careful. Our, our drivers are going to be required to monitor who's on the bus, who's getting on the bus that doesn't belong. Students will not be permitted to travel home to their friend's home via the school bus. We just don't have the space. And we are trying our best to manage within these. And we are trying our best to manage within these socially-distanced requirements that we've been given. Any questions about our transportation process?
So in the past, do we have like a number that we've transported every year?
We do.
If we went down to fifty percent, is that going to?
Be enough?
Uh-huh.
We believe so because there are some buses that have carried students in the past where we didn't have enough seats for all the students. And so if you're thinking about an eighty-four passenger bus and there are kids sitting on the floor, that's too many students. But we also have buses where that number is quite a bit smaller. So looking at average ridership and the numbers that we can transport, and we may have to come back and ask you to reconsider our walk zones. We hope we don't have to do that. But until we actually see who can transport their students and who cannot, and once we ask those families to actually reserve their child's seat, we're not going to know exactly who's going to be using our resources.
I saw Joe and then Richard.
Yeah. Rethinking whether or not to even ask it. I see the buses being a big challenge because, again, you're going to have this bus driver have to regulate where kids are sitting, who's getting on, that kind of thing. And I'm just wondering, I think it's, it might be a total order for the bus drivers. Nothing against the bus drivers, but, you know, you get some kid who jumps on and wants to go home with his buddy, is the bus driver going to know that kid shouldn't have been on the bus? And all of a sudden, you look back and you're going to know you have a few extra kids on the bus. I'm never really asking a question, I'm just thinking of the issue. So I think that'll be challenging, and I think just getting some bus driver input as to how you manage the buses, if we haven't already, would probably be a good idea.
And it might be a really good time for people to get to know their neighbors, too, because carpooling could be really helpful in this matter, too, if we know that these six kids that are all going at the same time, that, and that mom has to go to work at seven o'clock on Monday, but she can take them on Tuesday. I think this might be a really good opportunity for us to get to know our neighbors around us and figure out a way to make this work because we're all going to have to compromise, and we can't do that. But if we could have the community and the students get together and their parents and figure out, this is how we can minimize this part and take that a little bit of pressure off of us and actually help build the community, too.
Just a comment on the bus driving. I think, will that, their intent to have their students ride the bus be on the letter of intent, or is that going to be a separate form?
We have included that as part of our parent information form.
Okay. And just as someone whose kids have rode the bus the entire time, high, middle school's a little iffy. High school, the kids don't ride it as much because they are involved in after-school activities. But my experience with bus drivers at the elementary level is they recognize most of their kids by sight. They know who they're picking up at the stops, and they're aware when somebody's got a friend on there. They, and if there's half as many kids, I think that they do a good job of looking after the kids.
I still think it's going to be a challenge. I agree with Joe, keeping those kids separated on the bus. I mean, it's going to be tough to keep those kids separated in the classroom, too. I mean, it's going to be a challenge. This isn't going to be easy for any of us.
Moving on with the presentation, just some additional things that we should talk about. One, there are a variety of needs, and to try and come up with a new system is challenging at best. We have learned a lot by listening to folks as they have asked questions and provided input, and it's helped us, too, to be able to research the information that helps to answer people's questions. One of the questions that seems to be hard for individuals and where they have asked for some kind of plan, people need to realize that the ultimate authority in any local municipality is really that public health department. And if there is an issue that deals with public health, their response trumps everybody. And so if someone has reason to believe that they might be symptomatic, or if that kind of condition shows up in any school, the health folks are going to be called immediately and we're going to follow their guidance and direction. They're going to ask a whole bunch of questions. It's not just going to be, well, who got sick and do we need to put that person out? Then it comes down to how we're operating and what we're doing to sanitize and to clean. And they will engage in all of their activities like contact tracing, trying to determine, well, how did this individual get sick? Is this a school issue or was this something that happened on the weekend because a person went to visit another community? So there's no really one simple answer to that. But we believe that we have a good working relationship with these folks and would certainly bring them into discussions or situations that might be part of COVID-19. We think that there have been a number of flexible options within these plans. We hope that we can apply them to the greatest number of people possible. But I think in all of our dealings, we've always tried to work with individuals if there are conditions or situations that just don't work, and we're still the same that way. We still want people to be happy and to be comfortable in their school day. Some of the things are still going to be challenging and based on those fundamental restrictions. We know that the intent of you folks and our principals, all of our staff, is to try to minimize risk. But we have conditions every day at school where a kid gets a bruise or he falls and hurts his arm. There's just some risk that happens with school. And that's something I think that we all have to recognize. And finally, just on this slide, everything is subject to change, and it happens regularly and often since last March. And we're just trying to be flexible and able to go with those changes as they arrive. So if we don't have an answer maybe to a question immediately, we'll certainly do our best to try to study that out, find out what's going on in an industry, and then see if we can apply those changes to our operations and our organizations. Sure, yeah.
Two questions. So I agree with you that the local health authority is the governing body that's going to address this. I assume, and I don't want to assume wrong, that our nurses, will they be trained? So I mean, they're going to kind of, as I see it, be an extension maybe of the local health authority. They'll know the rules, they'll know if, you know, if this happens, then we do this kind of thing. Am I correct in assuming that they'll be trained?
Thank you, Mr. Cassiopoul. In fact, our nurses during the nine weeks when school was out, they actually worked at the health department and worked at the health desk, and they were able to provide a lot of information for our community members. So yes, in addition to training and what they already know, the district is putting together a, an isolation room. So if we do have a student who presents with symptoms, they will be in an isolated room but supervised, and we will then have them there so that they're not contaminating the nurse's office or other places in the school until the parent can come and pick that child up. So we are trying to think about those conditions that have been mentioned as good ideas elsewhere and incorporating them into our operations as well.
Just one other question I had, I was waiting for the right time to ask it. And so if you're going to get to it, I apologize for jumping ahead, just tell me to wait. You know, we're talking about student, you know, student and staff safety and concerns, and I think we're putting some reasonable measures in place to accommodate that. But the one thing, and I emailed you on it, that we're not doing, we're not able to do maybe, is daily screening. So, you know, trying to do something, temperature checks or something, before students and staff even get into our buildings. I mean, that comes up a lot with the emails I'm getting from staff. And I wondered if at some point in the presentation, we can address, how can we do that? Or if we can't, why we can't do that?
Sure. So, nice segue, Mr. Cassiopoul. Thank you. Of course, the face covering is also a hot topic. And prior to what we heard from the governor's emergency directive, we had already planned to expect face coverings for all students and adults. The one thing that is different tonight than what we had provided in our materials, we believed that, based on OSHA guidance, that the face shields would be acceptable as face coverings. Based on the governor's guidance, we would strike that now, and we would require all students and staff to wear a cloth mask or at least a mask that could be disposed, a disposable mask. So face coverings is important, but where we may have said at one time that the face shields are going to be approved, those will not be part of our process any longer. So the health and wellness check, we are suggesting that this be done at home. If you think about even a school of three hundred students waiting to get into the building at the start of school, and I've had my temperature checked in a couple of establishments, and it probably takes no more than about two to three seconds. But to try to do that and to start school efficiently and to not have students congregate and to have them being sensitive to the whole social distancing piece, I don't see an efficient way to do that, Mr. Cassiopoul. So that's why I've not pursued that aspect. So we're relying essentially on our families, on our homes, to do that before they come to school, which really would save one step in the process if they don't come to school if they're sick. If they come to school sick, we discover it and then have to turn around and send them home. That would be a challenge. Now, that's still going to happen. We realize that that will be a condition that we'll have to deal with. We're certainly open for your guidance and direction.
And I appreciate that. I mean, but that is a, that is a big concern of mine, and I know logistically and separation-wise that's hard to do. And I think at the elementary level, maybe it's easier to do because I think about kind of the olden days where, you know, the kids were on the playground, then you line up at the back door, and the teachers can check, you know, nine to eleven kids pretty quick and doesn't occupy much time. As you get older, I see that getting harder, but I am concerned for our staff that, you know, we don't have any proactive measures in place. If we, we have things happening while they're there, and if we notice something, we'll deal with it when they're there, but they're already there. And I think that's a lot of the concern I was hearing, is, you know, convince me it's going to be safe to go back, and if we can't do any pre-screening at some level, I'm struggling with how do we let everybody back in the building? And then on the same token, I don't think we're going to see the spikes we're going to see, but I'm trying to play that devil's advocate and say, you know, worst-case scenario, you know, how do we pre-screen people and just try to make sure everybody's as safe as they can be before they enter our premises? And I'm not, I appreciate the families, and I know a lot of families are going to do a good job making sure their kids are healthy before they come to school, but some, for any variety of reasons, aren't. You know, they're busy, they leave for work early, they, those kinds of things, they have other priorities. I don't think the parents are going to be, you know, is going to achieve my comfort level, I guess.
Well, and the other thing is, there's not a lot of thermometers you can get anymore. I mean, even as a family, let alone as a district. But if we're going to have families take temperatures, then we need to find out where the supplies are because I waited four months for me to get a thermometer for my grandson. And so that makes me...
I guess my point with that would be, particularly with elementary, I'm okay with asking staff to do a self-help assessment and whether that's taking their temperatures, you know, checking how they feel. I don't think we need anyone screening our staff before they come. And as far as the students go, even in elementary, if they're dropped off on the bus or if they're dropped off in the car, once, if it's at recess, they're there, whether it's checking them in or that. But I guess the other thing with elementary kids and even kids in general is fevers are not predictable. And I've had kids that have, I've checked their temperatures in the morning, and by four o'clock in the afternoon, they're running a hundred, you know, they're fine. And it just changes so much. So if parents are checking and aware of everything, I think that's something we really need to figure out with our attendance policy so that people know that you're not penalized if you keep your kid home because you think it might be allergies or you think it's, you know, like sometimes you didn't have that option. You'd be like, oh, I think this is an allergy, you know, I think this is allergies. And sometimes you get that. But I think people, everyone is going to have to be trained to be like, if you think you're not well or you think the kid's not well, you need to stay home and do remote today.
If you have symptoms, you must stay home.
Yeah, any symptoms. But I'm not sure that temperature screening at the schools is even going to, if you did it in the morning, I don't know that it would help you that much if difference from the parents doing it in the morning.
And I'm certainly not saying it's going to be a hundred percent. Certainly, it's not. But right now, we don't have any measures. We're just saying, it's your day, come to school. And if you happen to have something going on, we'll deal with it after you've already ran through the building. I'm not sure what the answer is, but I'm just, you know, I had enough concern about that to where I just wanted to make sure we have some discussion about it.
And I'm wondering, Joe, you know, when you think about, and I know, Richard, I'll get to you right after this, Richard's been waiting. If you think about it in an elementary school, looking at these restrictions, it's not going to be business as usual. I'm guessing that most schools are going to have kids come in and go to their classrooms. We're not going to have big recesses full of hundreds of kids running around outside. And so by the time they got there, they're already in through the building. I mean, to stop everybody at the doorway, you're going to have a huge congregation of kids and parents and cars, and it's going to be such a bottleneck. And that's also going to be a huge expense to make sure we have enough thermometers, enough staff members to do that. And I think, I mean, if that's what the board wants us to look into, but it's going to take resources, so.
I'm aware of that. I know it's going to take resources and money, but I think, yeah, I'm not, yeah, it needs to be addressed to some point. I mean, I think we're controlling everything else to the best degree we can. I think if we decided that was something we need to do, we could find a way to minimize the congregations and those kinds of things as well. I know it would be difficult. Every decision, the schools and the superintendent and everybody has to make is a challenge.
And with elementary, we have breakfast in the classroom. So I mean, it wouldn't, because like you said, you're not going to stop them until they get in the classroom anyway because they're dropped off and on the bus and all that. So I mean, you could take that five minutes while they're eating their breakfast to go around and go click, 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 too. But I don't know how that would work in the high school or the middle school.
Well, and even in elementary, I think it would, there would be quite a bit of challenges with that. So, Richard?
Yeah, I think what people need to understand, too, is just because the kid doesn't have a fever at that particular moment, doesn't mean that he's not symptomatic or carrying that COVID. So you could take the temperature in the morning, an hour later, the kid could have a temperature.
They might never have a temperature.
Or maybe never have a temperature, yeah, because that's not a sure sign, I mean, that they don't have it. So I don't know what the answer is, but, you know, I see your point, but I think it'd be very difficult. And I think at some point, we've got to rely on the parent to monitor their child and not send them to school if they have any symptoms or they're not feeling well.
Yeah, no, and I get that. And temperature checks is one example. I mean, you know, you go to the doctor's office and they check your temperature, they ask you four or five questions and whatnot, and, you know, we're not doing any of that. And I just think we want to consider maybe, is there anything we could do? And if the answer is no, there's really nothing we can do, then we vetted that, and, you know, we just go from there.
Well, I think the teachers during the day would be monitoring the children also and looking to see if they're coughing, sneezing, you know, if they're looking like they might have a fever, you know, and then the nurse is going to be there, they can send the nurse's office. But like my granddaughter, I mean, there's, a lot of times she'll have a ninety-nine-point-one temperature and be fine, and it's just because she's been doing some kind of dance or whatever. And it's just because she's been doing some kind of dance or whatever, you know. So, I don't think a fever, just if you have a 99.1 fever is going to be indicative.
Lupe's been waiting very patiently with her little finger and I've missed it.
Thank you. I would just like to ask our families to recognize that we all need to work together and that we need to, you know, help out. So, you know, as parents, we know when our children are sick, you know, we recognize when they have symptoms. So, I think asking the parents to help us out with that piece would be extremely beneficial to all, you know, the entire families in our district. It's the time for us to all work together.
I just was reading the American Academy of Pediatrics recommendation on that. And as far as temperature checking and they recognize how impractical it can be to temperature screen students. So, they said, in lieu of that, methods to allow parent report of temperature checks done at home may be considered. And you could set up each individual teacher who has the class dojo or the tech team could say, hey, text me your kid's temperature, you know, if that's, you know, or a health check, yes, did the health check this morning. And the recommendation, what was the temperature, was 100.4 is when, if they have a fever of 100.4 or greater or symptoms, they shouldn't be present in school. So, I mean, I think, I think asking parents to do that is a reasonable and practical safeguard. And just, most people don't want to spread anything. And I think people are going to be a lot more cautious about those things.
Sorry to hijack your topic, Mr. Stokes.
It's okay. I appreciate the feedback. That's what these meetings are about. So, I'm not going to spend a lot of time on social distancing. We are going to go on the record and say that large gatherings at the schools are going to be discouraged as are visitors to the classroom. So, please kind of be aware of those conditions. We've also talked to some extent about the disinfecting and cleaning protocols. There has been kind of a neat development that just happened this week. And it's identified there by an acronym TIES. That stands for Task Force Initiative for Educators' Safety and Screening. This is a proposal by the Teachers' Health Trust. And the Department of Education here in Nevada is right now working on a contract with these folks. And it's a group that will come in to all of the school districts in the state and do COVID-19 testing on anybody who wants to participate. And that essentially sets a baseline and helps us start school essentially knowing that our staff members are not contaminated, at least to the level that our systems are accurate and those tests are accurate. And then if anybody during the course of the school year feels like they have been in contact with someone who might be infected or if they're starting to present the different symptoms, then this group will come back again and do that testing. Now, they don't actually treat the individual, but they do the testing and the follow-up. So, I thought that was good. I know that we, like you, I've received a lot of questions from concerned staff about, you know, what happens if someone does have a concern or thinks that they may be infected.
Mr. Stokes, on that, did they say what the turnaround time is for the result of the test? Because I know going to the health department here, people are waiting seven, 10 days before they get a result back. So, and during that period of time, they're asking you to quarantine. So, if, if they test, are they going to quarantine?
I had my results on 48 hours. So, I don't, maybe it's...
I had a guy at work who actually tested positive for COVID. It took 12 days for him to get his results locally.
We just had a lot of people in our family tested and it took a minimum of seven days and sometimes 10 days.
Trustee Varner, there is no information in this draft copy of this program that I have. But it does identify isolation as needed probably until that test result is known.
Yeah, because I know when we got tested, they asked us to quarantine, self-quarantine until we got the results back. And like I said, that was seven and sometimes up to 10 days.
Mr. Stokes, just to clarify, is that just teachers and staff or teacher, staff and students?
I believe it's just for staff. And that would include administration, support staff and certified staff. But there was no reference of students in that part of it. But that will be of no cost to the school district or to the individual staff member. This will be something that will be picked up, the tab will be picked up by the state. And of course, along those same lines, you know, what happens? And those are a lot of questions that we've also been receiving. What happens if I do get sick? And this is not an easy answer. And unfortunately, people are looking for an easy response or a quick response and it just doesn't exist because there are so many variables. But it's important to know that when COVID first started, the Congress put forward the Families First Coronavirus Response Act. And they've also put forward Emergency Paid Sick Leave and Emergency Family and Medical Leave Expansion Act, both which deal with trying to help families or workers who contract the disease. And so, they're depending on the situation. Because someone can say, well, hey, I was infected at work. Well, maybe you were really infected at a party in another place. And so, the first thing that has to happen is the local health department is called again. They go and they visit with that individual. And then they go through that contact tracking, contract tracing, did I say it right? Tracing. And they try to ascertain just how that individual has become infected or who else that individual may have come in contact with. So, if it can be shown through that type of investigation that the individual really did get sick at work, then yeah, there's a good possibility that there's a worker's comp claim. And there are conditions around that according to these acts that have been passed. And there's up to 80 hours of paid sick leave that is available from a different balance than the employee's balance. There's also potential for sick leave to be paid, even though it might not be at the full rate. But we have, we have worked with individuals in the past to make up if the individual has a sick leave balance. Say, for example, the federal government is going to pay for two-thirds of a, of a claim. And if that individual has sick leave, then that can be maybe used from the employee's balance to make the individual a little more whole. So, anyway, there are conditions and situations that exist. I want you to know that those things are here. Our folks are being trained on that. And we would certainly work with all of our staff members if they are in a condition or a situation where, you know, now they're ill and they're not able to do their job. And we would apply these conditions and regulations accordingly. Just a few minutes about nutrition services. Again, our folks in the Nutrition Services Department have worked out a schedule for providing food at school and to students who are working remotely. And it looks like it's something that can work. I know that there's likely to be some consideration and some experimentation. For example, some of our principals are concerned that they may not have enough space in their multipurpose room or in their cafeteria. And so, rather than having a full-blown meal that a student is carrying on a tray, maybe the lunch or the breakfast looks more like a grab-and-go kind of scenario that can be placed in a paper bag that can then be carried to a commons area and consumed outside of the cafeteria. So, we're working with each of the principals on those kinds of conditions. And I just want to acknowledge the work that's been done by Elizabeth Schneider and her staff. And thanks, Deja, I know he oversees that group as well.
Before we move on, if we're going to, I'm just curious, and AJ, maybe you can answer this. Is there going to be enough staff in the nutritional services to prepare meals to go at lunch, you know, and all the meals they had to prepare for the kids that are not in school that day? It seems like that's a lot of work. And I'm just curious, do we have enough staff to carry that out?
Thank you, Mr. Varner. So, as of right now, I'm talking with Elizabeth. She believes that the staff she has can do it. It'll take some, just planning, kind of planning out the timing and staggering of activities a little bit more. And it may, it may require a little bit more time possibly of the staff. I think part of it is until we get there, it's not exactly certain how it would play out as far as time needs. But we can clearly adjust quickly if we need to. We do have also quite a few part-time staff members that help out with our full-time employees. So, there are quite a few staff members at the schools. And again, I think it's important, I mean, at least with what we're looking at tonight with a hybrid model, the number of kids in the school on any given day is going to be half. So, the preparation though will, I mean, if the same number of students are taking meals, I mean, as far as if students are in school on a given day and the expectation is the next day they're home doing their remote learning, at the end of the day, meals would be made available to them to take home. And so, if you have half the kids there, but you're preparing double the meals, they're still preparing the same number of meals. It's just that there may be a bit of a difference in how they're served and that some will be hot right there and some will be in a take-home bag to go. So, she does think we can manage it. We still have to talk through what that, how that process will be executed with the additional meals and delivering those after school to students. We still have to work that out.
So, we wouldn't have the drive-through pickup lane for the meals? They'd take them home the night before?
As of right now, that is definitely an option. That would, that may prove to need more staffing if we're already working everything in the schools. We may be able to use other staff to help out with that. And we talked about transportation potentially, something like that. But at this time, we think that the delivery at school basically of the meal while students are there and then a meal to go at night, it would work out where we may not need to do the delivery otherwise or drive-through.
I have covered most of the items on this document. I would just maybe pause on bullet number four. For those members of our staff that believe they've got a medical condition that might impact their ability to work, we're simply asking that you go and see your doctor and then come and see HR. And we will work through those individual situations with you.
So, just for my sake, when we're talking about human resources, we already talked about that subbing might be hard with this hybrid section. Bus drivers might be hard with this. What about, we already had two nurses resign. So, we don't have sub nurses, do we? We do?
They're hard to come by, trustee Wilkie, but we do have them. I'm happy to report that we have hired at least one school nurse to replace one of the two that's resigned. And so, we're going to hope that we can still find another one. But yeah, we do try to have a couple of individuals that are willing to come in as they can for sub nurses. But any substitute position anymore is getting more and more difficult to find.
And so, when we talk about the hybrid method and we're going to have teachers and staff there, I noticed in the packet, we have the F8, the Frequently Asked Questions talks about how, what happens if a kid has COVID. But I didn't see in here what happens if we have a staff member come down with COVID.
So, we chatted about that. And Mrs. Sears' guidance was that we put together something specific for our staff, which we are working on.
I think that would be a really good idea because we have got a lot of questions about that. So, whatever you can put together, it would be, the sooner the better, like Stacy says.
Yeah, I'm getting just for the heck of it, on my phone right now, it's blowing up. People are calling up going, boy, it sounds like we've had, you know, all this time and we still don't know what we're doing. And I think those, some of those are unfair assessments. But I mean, people are concerned that, you know, we're in the 11th hour and we're still saying, well, maybe this, maybe that, you know, we're going to look at this. And I think the sooner we can tie some of this down, we always have to have flexibility. But the sooner we can tie some of this down, I think the more comfortable people are going to be. They're, you know, they're pretty concerned about all this.
And I think I would just ask everybody to be patient. You know, these conditions are changing sometimes multiple times in one day. And so, and I just know from being in contact with Mr. Stokes is these things are changing, that as soon as something changes, they're on top of it. It's impossible to answer all of these questions because a lot of it is out of their control. And so, I think that, just like in that previous slide that Mr. Stokes had on there, that plans could change and I think it might have said and should be expected to change. I think, and I think I said this at our last meeting, I anticipate we're going to have a couple revisions to our plan because these things are changing. And so, I know people are frustrated, parents are frustrated, staff members are frustrated. I think our district office is frustrated not getting the information they need to make these decisions. And so, you know, assume positive intent from our team and know that we're coming together to support everyone the best we can. And the answer is as soon as we get them, we're going to share them. But some of the stuff, I mean, the research is contradictory. It's really hard to make those decisions sometimes.
Yeah, and I agree. And even as we came into this meeting, I'm just pointing out what people are texting. You know, we came into this meeting and Richard, you announced that, hey, we just got noticed that the governor has a new directive. So, I mean, things are truly changing real time. And I think...
By the minute.
Yeah, I think some of the criticism is unfair. And some of it's by people who are voicing concern but haven't been part of the process. So, it's, you know, I would say the same thing. I'm asking everybody to, you know, be patient and trust to a degree in the process. But, you know, where we do have concrete solutions, the sooner we can get those out to people, the better. Because they are trying to plan for daycare and all that stuff. And we know all that, you know. But I think it goes a long way for some of these folks.
And I think that's fair. And I think one of the things I've said a lot in these last few months is, you know, the emails, the phone calls, the conversations we have with people, all you can do is listen. You can't argue because those perspectives are valid, they're real. And I think that we all share those concerns. And so, it's not like there's unreasonable concerns being raised. They're very reasonable. And we're doing our best to kind of work through them and it's a real challenge. Laurel, I think you wanted to...
One more quick question. With the, which I know we're getting to the calendar and next agenda item, but in our plan, we've got the school date starting as August 24th rather than the 17th. And then pre-K and kindergarten's coming to school on the 31st. What is the plan for that extra week before pre-K? Are the kids going to, I know there's the BRGANS test that they need to do. Is the plan to have that assessment done before they begin school in the hybrid formula?
Yes, you are correct. There's some assessment that needs to be done and teachers need to have the opportunity to work with students. It's impossible for a pre-K teacher to administer a BRGANS assessment with, you know, 20 students in the classroom, et cetera. So, that week, pushing back pre-K week is to allow for those different items to take place. place.
So, Mr. President, members of the board, this is the last slide of my presentation. Thank you for your indulgence and your questions. From my chair, these are the things that we need to have action on in order to meet the expectations of the Nevada Department of Education. If we are going to change the start date, which is what we're proposing and recommending, is a change from the 17th of August as the first student day to August the 24th. Now, the end date, and this will be part of what Mrs. Fuson will go through in our next agenda item, we're not really changing the number or proposing changing the number of days in the school year. We're obligated to a certain number. We are, we do have the ability by the Department of Ed Bill to use some of our student days for teacher professional development. And again, that's going to be aimed at providing them with additional training around distance ed. That's identified in that other bullet right below. Of course, we're also proposing a shift in our transportation policy, at least for now. We're not looking to change this in written policy, but as an operational procedure, a practice, if you will, for trying to keep our social distancing conditions at least as well as we can manage it at 50% on our school buses. And then, we obviously need to submit a proposed school reopening plan to the Department of Education. Our plan would be, as you have heard it tonight, using our ability to return to 100% in-person schooling when the time allows, to also use 100% online learning or remote learning, and then to also utilize this hybrid plan. So, those conditions would make up, and the information that I provided you in the packet to the State Department of Education, not for their approval, I bit corrected there, but for their certification. The approval happens at the board's level, at this board's level, and then the certification, essentially meaning that we have met all of their requirements and expectations, would be the next part. And coming into this meeting, that date was July 31st.
Mr. Stokes, can I ask you a question? As we look at approving the hybrid model, is there a way, and maybe this is a question for Ryan, to do so and add in some language that allows the superintendent to increase, I don't want to say occupancy, or, you know what I mean, class size to the greatest extent? So, now that we have the three-feet distance in there, so if you have a way, kind of to go back to Laurel's point, and you say, okay, well, in first grade, we could actually bring those kids every day. They only have 15 kids in a class. You know, I know that that's hypothetical in a lot of schools, but is there a way to give that leeway to Mr. Stokes so that he's not waiting on us to?
President Walker, I think the answer is yes. Most notably, what happened tonight was Mr. Stokes received a new directive from the governor's office. And so, if you were inclined to approve the hybrid model that's been presented to you today, you could do so with the condition that Mr. Stokes is authorized to tailor the adopted plan to meet the directive that he hasn't had too much of a chance to review yet. And so, I think you can approve the plan, which would satisfy the mandate of the NDE or the department, and still give him the ability to, with the approved plan, make whatever adjustments are necessary based on the new directive. Does that answer your question?
That does, and that might kind of give some of our teachers and schools and families a little bit of a heads-up of what we're looking at.
And I guess maybe even if it's, if that's something that is feasible, I'd be okay if we started the hybrid plan as-is, and if it takes an extra month to figure out how to fit some of those younger grade classes in for, if it's three days, if it's four days, something like that where they could get a little bit more in-class time, maybe that could be adjusted because everything is already subject to change in here, too.
Well, and I'm just thinking, I mean, you look at kindergarten and first grade and even second grade, how do you teach a kid to read and you're only seeing them twice a week if they're not sick? You know, I mean, that's, it's a real challenge, and I think that it's going to have an impact on education for years to come, and I don't think there's anything we can necessarily do about that. But I think that we certainly want to get these kids in school as soon as safely possible. And I think, I think that's, I think that's what all of us would say if you asked us what our goal is, you know. I'm wondering, you know, I know we have a lot of people who would like to give input, and so, we probably have other questions. And so, what I'm wondering is if we don't want to take public comment, and that might kind of help us think of some follow-up questions we might want to ask, give the public a little bit of time to share their thoughts. Go ahead, Laurel. What?
Didn't Sheriff Furlong have something to add before we go to public comment? No? Okay. I figured you had something better to do on a Tuesday night.
I think Trustee Wilkie's trying to stress me out today. So, before we take public comment, I just want to remind everybody that speakers are asked to identify themselves for the record. Speakers are further asked to refrain from speaking over each other, participating by telephone. Speakers are asked to limit their comments to no more than three minutes, whether in writing or oral, and to not simply repeat comments made by others. And I'll just remind everybody that the board may comment or answer questions that are raised. However, that will take away from those three minutes. So, for the most part, we will let you have your three minutes and probably ask Mr. Stokes to follow up or one of us, if possible. So, do we have, Sarah, are you wanting to provide public comment? Sure, just come on up, identify yourself for the record. It's good to see you.
Oh, I have three, I have four students attend all grade levels. I have high school or middle and elementary. I was curious, attendance got brought up. I'm not sure what the attendance policy is through all of this, like the emergency directives. I never cared for the attendance award before because I know my son has had a friend not come to our house after because we're, it's like, oh, he wasn't well, but he stayed the whole day because he really wanted that attendance award. So, I just was curious, you know, I agree with parent screening. I'm okay with parent screening and sending them to school, but I don't want it to be a punishment to the student or the parent if they feel it's a safer decision to keep them home that day, to be on the safe side. So, I was just curious, what is the policy?
And so, the question, if I could just repeat, is will students who stay home because parents think they're sick, have that counted against them?
Yeah.
Go ahead, Mrs. Fuson.
Tasha Fuson for the record. We are working through with the state what attendance requirements are. Obviously, students are required to attend school either remotely or in person on regularly scheduled school days. That being said, what will happen if a student is missing a lot of school and they're in the hybrid model and attended, scheduled to attend school in person, the school staff will meet with the family and determine if whether or not a full-time remote learning option would be a better option for that student. So, I wouldn't look at it as a penalty, per se, but we are, of course, going to be monitoring student attendance and student participation in whatever program they're enrolled in to make sure that they're continuing their learning. I do believe even last year, we got away, we did away with our perfect attendance awards so that we don't have that kind of a situation for our students. So, there is some flexibility going on, but the most important thing from the state level is that districts and schools are making sure that our students are fully engaging in the educational process. And again, if a student needs to do that 100% from home, that's okay, too. We just want to make sure we have a program that meets the needs of the student.
Can I have a follow-up question? With, if someone chooses the hybrid metal, model, is there flexibility as in, or maybe fluidity in going remote to, back to hybrid? I don't know, it's like, only at a quarter term can you maybe switch from one to the other?
So, what we're hoping to do with having our teachers really work closely together is we do know that we're going to have some students.
Fuson, that's three minutes. Could you possibly follow up with Ms. Romeo?
Absolutely. I can do that.
Thank you. Do we have any other public comment in the room? Seeing none, Raymond, do we have any on the telephone?
Yes, we have a few folks online here with public comment. Julie Tuttle, you are unmuted. You may need to unmute yourself, and please identify yourself for the record.
This is actually J.J. Tuttle for the record. I have a elementary school student and a high school student, so I understand the child security issues that are coming apart with the elementary age, and that seems to be the major focus. The problem is, I have a senior who has worked her tail off and has well over a 4.0 and wants to maintain that, but taking three AP classes. So, if she is sick on a Tuesday and she misses AP Calculus, she does not go back with the hybrid AB schedule until the next week and misses the entire week of Calculus. And I don't know how that's going to work for those kids that have really structured their entire lives for this college-bound thing that we focus on, and now she is going to be punished, not by the school district, but by the fact that she cannot learn that material.
This is Tasha Fuson for the record. Our hope is that, again, with our teachers receiving training and provided blended learning opportunities, that the planning around that versus what we did during fourth quarter will be much more effective for our students. So, in that case, when a student has an absence, that lesson or those resources so that student can do that remotely from home will be available for that student. So, the hope is that, again, where it was, we did not have a true blended learning model. We had even for our secondary students who were meeting with their teachers on Google meets, it was just kind of a Band-Aid to get us through the time. We all know that. And instead, we now are going to have, like I said, training for our teachers to truly offer blended learning, offer resources for students so that that true flipped model can be done and that your daughter in that particular case would have access to instruction even from home if she was sick.
There are going to be office hours for like her to go on her A or B day, to be able to go into, not outside of contract hours, of course, but for her to go and meet during lunch or have the freedom to meet after school like they were doing. Because she's, she's a very hard worker that'll put in that time to get that A and make sure that she's, that she's getting those grades. And I just want to make sure that she has the, because the online thing was, I get it, but it was very hard for her because she's a very tangible student. She needs that teacher interaction. So, is there a place for that to happen?
So, there is currently in the hybrid schedule on Monday afternoons during that planning time. I do know many of our AP teachers at the high school have already talked about the need to do study sessions with their students and additional lab time even on Mondays. So, I know the individual teachers are planning for that.
And that's in person?
That could be either through a Google meets or in person, depending on the teacher. So, they will be getting the information out.
Great, thank you so much.
Our next comment is from Lake Shank. You are unmuted, please identify yourself for the record.
My name is Lake Shank. Can I talk now? Okay.
We could hear you.
Quite frankly, I'm just disgusted by the fact that the school district is even considering anything other than remote learning. Was the top priority of this school district clearly being money? I doubt the district will provide what is necessary to mitigate risk. Will each classroom be assessed for proper levels of air ventilation? Will rooms not needing those levels each be provided with HEPA airport purifiers as recommended by the CDC? The library, music room, and computer room at Fremont Elementary are all windowless? Will the school district be funding full sanitization of each classroom several times a day? That seems unlikely since Fremont Elementary is unable to keep up with daily cleaning during regular times? Even if the school district provides all of this and more, this will not eliminate risk. This will perhaps lower the number of infected, the number of deaths, but it will not eliminate them. Hire the school district's children, six feet apart from each other at all times. They're children. We have seen how child hospitalizations surged 23% in Florida while they are forced to reopen schools. Are we ignorant enough to believe that if we send our teachers and our children into enclosed spaces for hours on end, that we will not be fall the same fate? There will not be big upgrades for children that will forever stay children. We all want our children to go back to learning and socializing normally like they deserve. Yet, we should all remember that dead children will never learn, socialize, or age, which I believe is a fate much worse than being slightly behind in social and academic learning, factors that can be mitigated by the many qualified teachers in our district. My mother is a teacher. She will be in a room with these children. She may die from this virus, or she may watch one of her students die from this virus. Perhaps it will be both. My mother is all that I have, and I am terrified that I will be planning a funeral. I am terrified that a child will be planning their parent's funeral. I am terrified for every parent that has to think about their child's funeral. So, I ask you, Lupe Ramirez, Laurel Croftman, Stacy Wilkie, McColl, McColl, Richard Warner, Mike Walker, Donald Kareen, and you, Joe Cassiopho, who will wipe this blood off of your hands? And what comforts will you tell yourself each night when you've chosen money over the lives of those in our community? What comfort can there possibly be? I yield my time, thank you.
Thank you for your input, and I'll just remind you that school employees are, as per the governor's orders, essential employees, and so, we are doing our duty. Thank you.
Moving on to our next public comment, Bethel Beglin, you are unmuted, and please state your name for the record.
You might be muted. I think on the bottom left-hand corner, there should be a audio button.
Is that better?
Yes, we could hear you. Good evening.
I'm Bethel Jeanie Beglin, and I might be backtracking, but I just want to ask, so, because I'm under the Read by Grade Three grant, and I was working at Fritsch, and I was an intervention specialist, so I have no idea what kind of job I might have this next year. And every time I look at Carson City School District job postings, I see job postings for volleyball assistant coach or head coach for all these sports that aren't happening in fall. They're postponing them till spring. So, I'm curious why I can't find job postings for me to secure a job where I'm working with students directly with their educational experience, but these sports opportunities are coming up on the job postings when we postponed fall sports.
Thank you, Ms. Beglin. I think that, I'll ask Mr. Stokes or Mr. Delphin to follow up with you on job postings and availability in the district. Appreciate your feedback.
I'd be happy to do that.
Moving on to next public comment, Bev Singleton, you are unmuted. Please state your name for the record.
Bev, you might be still muted. Same thing, bottom left-hand corner.
They didn't answer my question.
I could hear you. You might have muted yourself again.
I think I got it. Can you hear me now?
We could hear you, Bev. Good evening.
Okay. Good evening, I'm Bev Singleton, and I just have a couple of questions. I know in the past I know in the past that some of our sites have not had full-time nurses. Has that been changed now? And who will be monitoring these isolation rooms?
Bev, this is Richard Stokes. We have always tried to have a full-time medical person at each of the schools. We've tried to get those individuals as RNs but have not always been successful. And so we have had, in some cases, EMTs work in those positions. And so we are working to establish the qualifications and the expectations for someone working in those isolation rooms. And we've been working with our, not only HR department, but also with our safety services individual to make sure we have a qualified staff member there, but that, that, those positions will yet to be determined.
Thank you, Mr. Stokes. Another question that was posed to me by a teacher, and I looked at our survey results, and there were some teachers who, or some staff, we don't know if it was certified or classified, that said they did not want to return and would prefer to do just the remote learning. Those that have an issue with returning for medical reasons or whatever, would they be allowed to just do remote teaching?
And this is Richard Stokes again, Bev, but we would certainly entertain those possibilities.
Thank you.
Our next public comment is from N. Varner. N. Varner, you are unmuted. You may need to unmute yourself, and please state your name for the record.
I think you're still muted, Ms. Varner. Hit the little speaker on the bottom left-hand corner of the screen.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Nancy Varner, and I'm an English language teacher at Boardwalk High Elementary School. And I was just, wanted to comment on the plan. It seems like a lot of thought has gone into it, and it sounds like some things could work really well.
Nancy, I think we lost you.
Parents, you know, to help us with screenings, but also reaching out to our businesses because I think it's important that if offices have social distancing guidelines, maybe employees and employers can get together, discuss, hey, I've got my kids on this schedule, and my kids are on this schedule, and how can we work this out, and what days could we stay home? Just really bringing the whole community together to make this work as best as we could. That's my comment.
Mrs. Varner, there was a period of time when your phone cut out, and so we missed most of your comments. So you could, you could either follow up in an email to Mr. Stokes, and of course, you're always welcome to email the board, or repeat what you said. I apologize.
Well, my comment was just about bringing the community together and getting employers and employees talking and trying to figure out how to make the remote learning days work for them, and bringing in the neighbors for helping with transportation, and bringing in parents to work on, you know, making sure they are screening their kids and making sure that they're ready to be in school. So it's just going to need a complete community effort to make this work. Thank you.
I couldn't agree more, and I think that we all want to get back to normal, and to do that, we're going to have to work together. So we're all going to have to sacrifice a little bit. Thank you.
Our next comment is from A. Smith. A. Smith, you are unmuted. Please state your name for the record.
Hi, Alyssa Smith. I'm a high school teacher over at Carson High. I just have a couple of questions. For one, my first question is, at Carson High, we have one lunch period, and even if we are breaking our students into Group A and Group B, we have, I think, Ms. Fuson, you probably know this as well, 2,200 students at Carson High? So that's about 1,000 kids, not to mention staff members. So where will these students be eating lunch?
Tasha Fuson for the record. Hi, Alyssa.
Hi.
Obviously, our community knows, or I believe they know, that Carson High School has just two small lunchrooms. So the intent would be for the students to use the entire campus as they have in the past, and for nutrition services, to have multiple stations for those grab-and-go meals. So to be able to say to our young adults that they need to socially distance themselves, not eat and talk, or not eat and walk at the same time, and to sit down and have, have their meals anywhere throughout the building as they have done in the past. So I think it's going to be a lot of working with the students and just communicating those expectations.
Okay. And then my next question is because the state has, you know, obviously slashed education funding, again, because that's what we do here, we already, teachers already, as you guys know, we spend upwards of hundreds of dollars on our classroom supplies every year, and we get, I think our reimbursement is up to $240 or maybe less. So because there's a budget, how will we get funding for extra sanitation equipment per classroom? So, you know, sanitation wipes, Purell, et cetera, pencils, paper? What do we do when we lend a student a pencil and we need pencils back? How are we going to clean these things? How are we getting funding to clean these things? Am I going to have to pay for this out of my pocket? Will our reimbursement budget be bigger this year?
Hi, Alyssa. This is A.J. Feeling. This is not Mrs. Fuson. So I think to answer your, your question, so the reimbursement that teachers have received, I believe, since 2015, that was entirely cut, that was a state grant program that was entirely cut here in this special session that just ended. So as far as that support, that would be gone. School sites, of course, offer some funds for classroom teachers, and it's dispersed kind of differently at each school. As far as cleaning supplies for your classroom, there is no expectation.
That's three minutes. Could you follow up with her?
Absolutely. Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Our next public, public comment is from, oh, it went away. We have no other public comment.
I'm going to take a 10-minute recess before, we have some written public comments, but I think that everybody needs a little break, so we'll come back in 10 minutes. Thank you.